Welcome to the Jira Life, the place to find news, events, and interviews with the Atlassian communities movers and shakers. Because we didn't choose the Jira Life, the Jira Life chose us. Thank you to Revise for backing us up and making the Jira Life possible.
Everyone, welcome back to our session number 20. Holy moly, Rodney, do we really know how to extend these out now?
Yes. It's like half a year.
I mean, I will say that Sarah and Bob have been doing a lot of the heavy lifting on this for the past three weeks.
Yeah, we had a little travel here and there and in between.
Oh, and not mention, I've been not able to stay healthy for more than like three days.
Hmm, that's no good. Happy fall.
Uh, yep. I think I have this. Share screen, share screen. Window, ding a bop.
We think we found it?
What up, Bob?
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Now at the party.
Ain't no party like a producer party, because a producer party don't.
Be producing.
Producer party has all the money.
I don't have all the money. Alright, so. When we last left off, we were.
You left off.
When I, sorry, sorry, you, 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 you are correct. When I last left off, because everybody scattered like the full winds.
I was at Disneyland, I had an excuse.
There were a variety of birthday celebrations, so.
Uh, yes, apparently, and who celebrates their birthday at Disneyland? I mean, come on. Wait, 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 no, let's, let's, let's amend that. Who celebrates their birthday at the place that they despise the most?
I mean, I take my wife to the happiest place on earth.
Where she's the most miserable?
Yeah, a bit of an oxymoron there.
She, when, 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 when the marriage therapist comes, that is going to be a key topic of discussion.
Force, if I force her to like it, she'll like it eventually.
Oh, my God.
That, I believe it's called Stockholm syndrome.
Okay, um, so when, when I last left off, we were, uh, starting to look, uh, deeply into the structure of assets. Um, basically in the, uh, in the app, um, they, they talk about in this course, assets being, um, its own platform app. But, uh, if you are looking at it from the ACP four twenty, it's going to be still a part of the premium package of Jira Service Management or GSM. In this, uh, in this little course, we talked about the structure of object schemas, where in the object schemas you had, uh, specific object types which defined, um, the attributes of the object and the various attribute types and relationships that an instance or an object of that type could have. And, uh, we went all the way through attributes, references, permissions, and roles, uh, in assets, and now we go to the quiz. You know. For you guys that didn't get to, didn't get to see this, so you guys can try and get the right answer. We'll see if you can get it without. Yeah, sight unseen. Alright, we've got Emily. She's setting up a new asset management system in Jira Service Management using assets. She needs to organize her company's laptops, including models, serial numbers, and assigned users. Which of the following best describes how she should accurately structure her assets to represent these details? Alright, is it A, create an object schema for each laptop model with different object types for serial numbers and attributes for users? B, create a single object schema for IT assets with object types for laptops and attributes for model and serial number. C, create an object type for each user with objects for laptops and attributes for serial numbers. D, create an attribute for laptops with object schemas for models and object types for serial numbers. A, B, C, or D?
I'm reading between B and C again.
I'm between A and B.
B has a real.
Not, not A. Not A, I'm, I'm in between B and B.
B and B? Is there any error between B and B?
Probably.
To be or not to be? That is the question.
Thing like.
I think B is the crowdsourced answer if I'm reading everyone's answers.
You, uh, D is, D is wrong.
A and D are wrong, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the challenge is I'm putting for, on C, right? I'm saying you could have objects that are people, you can have objects that are laptops, and then you can reference one from the other, which is why I'm hesitating on creating an object. No, 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 it's B, now that I read it more closely.
Yeah, because letter C is clearly, you make an object type of the type user, and then the object, and then the user, the laptop, and that doesn't make sense.
My brain was inserting stuff that was not there.
It has to be B.
It's B.
Alright, I've been saying B since the start, so.
I, I can make an argument for C, but I'll, I'll, I'll go with the crowd with B, and you are correct.
I should mention, at some point in the past, I did do database design, so.
Well.
Nobody likes to show off, dude. Nobody likes to show off.
So Rodney, you set yourself up if you get one wrong now.
Oh, absolutely. I'm going to get one wrong, because it's been twenty years, but.
But everything's a database.
Alright, so, uh, Emily's going to create a single object schema to represent all of the IT assets. We have specific object types under the schema to represent laptops. And then each instance of that object type laptop will have attributes for things like the model and the serial number. So there's the, this allows for that clear hierarchy, um, in terms of assets where the schema is representing the broad category. Object types represent specific items within the category, and then attributes represent the metadata or, uh, specific details about those items like the model or serial number. Alright, moving on to the next question. John, a new service project admin needs to find a specific laptop asset within assets. He knows the laptop serial number. Which of the following steps should John take to locate this laptop quickly in the assets user interface? A, navigate to the IT asset management object schema and use the filter function within the laptop object type? B, create a new object schema for the laptop using its serial number? C, create a new object for the laptop using its serial number? Or D, directly modify the attributes of the laptop object type to include the serial number?
I'm gonna go with A, because this sounds like he's searching for things.
Yeah, everything else is not objectively not searching, so I'd have to go with A as well.
Let's say you.
I'm with you guys too. I'm with you.
Yeah.
Sometimes you want to go with the crowd.
Yeah, that would be.
I have a bad habit if I can't read when somebody has talking, it's out the way till Bob finishes, I can go read the question. I'm just catching up.
Sorry. No, you can just listen to him say a question.
I can, I try.
Some people, some people think that my voice has really, really good qualities and such a distinctive timber that they enjoy.
I'm gonna say this.
And Rodney is raising his hand automatically, it's almost by impulse.
I mean, yes, but I'm going to say this, Alex. As someone who has this, as someone who is your dear friend, that is the most ADHD thing I've heard all day.
I will let you know for the record, I did put Bob's, you know, when he's on the Jira Life, so I can fall asleep every night.
I don't get it.
You have a very soothing voice to fall asleep to.
Okay, well, thank you. So it's the only time that you actually do listen to the Jira Life.
But to my defense, I only listened to the first thirty seconds of the intro.
You guys, you heard it here first, January twenty twenty-six, TGL ASMR featuring Bob.
Changing the whole show format now.
You click on settings, then click on.
John should navigate to the specific object schema that contains IT assets and use the filter function within the laptop object type to search for the serial number. So this is where you're leveraging the structure, uh, inside of assets to locate specific items efficiently. The other ones aren't, uh, aren't the answer, because they don't, they fall under different operations of crud. So. So Rodney, the, Rodney, the database nerd knows exactly what crud is.
It's behind my ears, right? That's like waking up and you're like, ugh, or in your eyes.
Not, well, you know, that's, yeah, usually when I wake up in the morning, I, I wipe my eyes from, from that, no, um, for, for basic database operations, create, uh, read, update, and delete if I'm.
Delete, yes.
Yep, there you go. So.
Oh, you guys are just nerding out too much.
Yeah.
Well, this isn't what you're missing, Alex. This is why you boys had such a hard time with assets. Need to work on your database management.
Or it's the void assets all entirely.
Can't, it's, it's being pervasive, it's got, it got promoted as a platform app.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Everybody asset.
Yeah, it may have gotten promoted, but people still gotta use it.
So Alex was probably asleep when he, uh, when he listened to last week's, um, uh, the study session when it was just me and gave my, and I gave my brilliant analogy of what assets is. And Alex also is, Alex is also woefully, uh, woefully underaged to remember Schoolhouse Rock.
I do remember Schoolhouse Rock, I was still old enough. That was my kindergarten, first grade.
Do you, do you remember the, do you remember the noun song?
No, I just remember conjunction junction, what's your function?
That, and Liz remembers that also, also the bill, but the, the, one of the best Schoolhouse Rocks, and it helps me remember assets, is what nouns are. Noun is a person, place, or thing, so. And, and Sarah's nodding her head because she knows I'm right. Alright, next question. Lisa is configuring a new printer object in assets. She wants to ensure that each printer object includes information about its location, model, and IP address. Which of the following actions should Lisa take to achieve this? Create attributes for location, model, and IP address within the printer object type? Assign the printer object type to different object schemas based on location? Use the global settings to define all IT assets' location, model, and IP address? Create separate object types for location, model, and IP address within the printer schema?
Okay, I'm gonna give a Gen X. Let's see if you can get my answer based on this. Rodney got it, I think.
I'm sorry, I didn't see. You're gonna have to do it again.
You need to raise your fingers a little more.
Yes.
Ah.
And then I'll comb my hair.
Am I supposed to be laughing at something?
Yes. Well, if you're Gen X or Zenial, you would be laughing.
I will say, I, I will say for those of other generations to catch up, there was a wonderful, uh, homage to it in, in The Martian, so.
Oh, yeah? Oh, I don't remember that. I'll have to go look at that.
Yes, when, when they ask him to, when they ask him to, uh, take a picture.
Y'all need to get a hobby.
I have plenty of hobbies. For those who are even still more woefully, um, unknown, she is talking about the Fonz.
Yes.
Whose catchphrase was A.
That is correct. Lisa should create specific attributes for location, model, and IP address within the printer object type to accurately capture and organize these details for each printer asset. Now, Sarah, can you think of another way that the printer object type could get the attributes, um, location, model, and IP address without direct assignment?
Put on the spot? No, I mean, you're saying so, but unless you're talking about, once again, like location, we could have location objects that we could be referencing through attributes. But I feel like you're saying something different.
I'm saying that, uh, a printer object type could get the, uh, attributes for location, model, and IP address, but they wouldn't be directly created on that object type. There's another way you can do it.
Through, well, of course, you can do imports, but then through data manager and connections possibly? But I'm not, where are you going with it?
I was, I was thinking about, uh, parents and children.
Okay, yeah, so kind of what I was with the, the child object types.
Yes.
And then you would link them, yeah. I just, I was imagining not doing it for IP address, I think was the one that was thrown at me, but.
Well, I mean, it could be, so you could, you could have a, uh, you could have a parent type called device.
Yep.
Right? And it's, it would have the attributes, location, model, and IP address. Printer could be a child object type and inherit all of the attributes, uh, from, uh, from the parent. So it would, it would automatically get location, model, and IP address.
Y'all need a hobby, man.
Yes.
Oh, I got what you're saying now. Yep, 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 yep.
Alex says that because he got that question wrong. Well, wait and see, you know, I'm, I'm gonna wait for the one.
Not my cup of tea, I don't nerd out over assets.
See, and I just feel like.
One day, the, the comment is gonna come in that, you know, the way that Bob explained parent and child object types got me that, that answer correct on the exam. I'm just, just you wait, that's gonna come.
And I see an absolute one-to-one correlation between assets and being a Jira admin. And the way the whole structure works is exactly the same. You're creating databases, so you've got your, um, you start at the top with your schema is your projects. Your objects are your issue types, your attributes are your, are your fields. And then your, even as he was saying with the children, right, your subtasks, so that you can see them and reference them and, and make them visible in other places. They're exactly, to me.
Sure, admins don't think about their architecture hierarchy like that, they just use it because it exists.
Okay, as early as twenty fifteen, I had the database schema for Jira six on my desktop and referenced almost daily.
There you go.
And how many times have you referenced it in twenty twenty-five?
Hmm, well, if it lasted, we'll publish it still every day.
It's a working knowledge, right? It's a foundational view into it all, into how it works and how it connects, because everything's.
No, I mean, I can appreciate the art, I'm just saying. It ain't for every Jira admin. It will have to become though, very soon, within the next three hundred and sixty-four days.
We would say we'd recommend it. Let's talk about Mark.
Let's talk about Mark. Mark's an IT manager. He plans to delegate various responsibilities within the asset system to his team members. He needs to understand the different roles available in assets and their capabilities to make informed decisions. Which of the following roles should Mark assign to a team member responsible for creating and updating asset details, but not for configuring the overall system? Assets admin, assets manager, assets user, or assets developer?
One of these things is not like the other.
Well, you, so on, on this, I recommend, uh, striking out whichever ones you think are the highest privilege and whichever ones you think are the lowest privilege. And then you got a fifty-fifty shot.
Yep.
So not assets admin.
I've got my answer. I don't know if it's the right answer. I've got a fifty-fifty shot, but I've got my answer.
I've got an answer.
I'm gonna say B, assets manager, yeah.
The other three made look, they don't look made up, but they look like they're more in the software world than they are in the IT world.
No, there's, there, there, there's, there's a difference between developer manager, and the difference is, oh, it was assets developer.
Go back and read the tape, and that's what I said.
Sarah did say that, she is not.
Right before, I was like, anything is the D.
Alright, so, um, difference between the assets manager and the assets developer. Uh, it's for, uh, team members who need to create and update asset details. Uh, but don't require permission to configure the overall asset system. So in other words, you can use it to create and update objects, but you cannot use it to go that one level further, and that is to make updates to object types and attributes.
I'm gonna make up, up, well, space administrator correlation on that.
Okay.
Right, because, you know, somebody who has like browse and create and edit items would be like a user, the assets user. And then the assets developer is the one who can go in and do more configurations with it. And then your manager, assets manager is more like your product admin-ish with assets admin, right?
So, you know, a little bit higher, higher up the tree, and then, and then ultimately you have like, uh, the equivalent of the, uh, assets admin would be like in, in the conference room would be like a space admin.
Alright.
Alright, again. Try again. Alright.
I'm gonna say C.
Okay?
Let's see.
Was it the same question?
Because we did it again. It's like Mark's back, wait, what? But they randomized it just to keep you on your toes.
Just enough to keep you, yeah.
I think Bob's reading.
I am reading. Alright.
Just to himself.
You know, Bob, there's the rest of the team here.
No, I got.
That's me.
Hey, Sarah, the IT asset manager?
Yeah. Sarah, you're an IT asset manager, you're setting up permissions and assets to ensure that team members can only view and manage assets relevant to their work. She also wants to ensure that the marketing team can only access information about their own devices. Which of the following best describes how Sarah should configure permissions in assets? Assign the marketing team to the assets user role for the specific object types that contain their devices. Create a new global role for the marketing team that restricts access to their devices only. Modify the assets admin role to include access restrictions based on team membership. Use the assets developer role to assign individual access to each marketing team member.
Honestly.
So Sarah?
I think, and, and I like the way that Sarah's associated with marketing, because I've said plenty of times, I used to work in martax, so it's like, this was written for me.
I am almost certain it was.
I, I'm thinking it's though, A, assign the marketing team to the asset user role for the specific object types that contain their devices, because like I was saying before, the user role is kind of like that, that read has that readability.
I was going between A or B, so I'm willing to run with it.
Okay.
I'm gonna say C and D are definitely wrong.
Yeah, like those would be too much.
Okay.
But I could see the global roles, it just, I can't remember global roles and assets off the top of my head. So that's why I'm going with A. And then we'll say Sarah did it wrong.
That's correct. Should assign the marketing team to the assets user role for the specific object types that contain their devices. So they can view and manage assets within designated object types aligned with the need to restrict access to only those assets relevant to their work. So the global role, uh, grants more permissions than needed. And there we go.
You know, and this is one of the things I'll say about the Atlassian certification exams and, and where that experience comes into play. That even if your overall experience with a particular area isn't so deep, your experience in other areas is translatable to what you're talking about. So you, you know, you can, you are able to recognize the patterns and the ways the Atlassian products are set up, so you can just transfer that knowledge and probably get it right.
Very true.
Yep. Alright.
Unless you're Alex, and then you're just gonna give up on the assets part.
Just know, you're not gonna get a hundred.
Alright, so we're moving on, we're gonna create asset object types and attributes. Uh, so one of the things that we want to look at is planning how to structure your asset management process. Uh, we'll look at creating an object schema, creating and configuring object types, creating and configuring attributes, configuring assets at the global and the schema levels, and then finally creating objects. So where do you start using assets? Sarah, I've missed you, you can. Run through and tell us all about it.
It says you should plan the optimal schema configuration. So think back to when we were talking about best practices, right, and you start interviewing people and you learn about their processes. It's going to be a very similar thing here when you start to create your asset schemas. You want to have questions and then know the answers to those questions to get you set down the right path. So what is the kind of data that you're going to be maintaining? And what are the types of things you're going to be maintaining? Physical assets, logical assets, people. There's even more types out there that you could be putting together. Um, whether or not they should be stored in a single object schema. You're gonna be thinking about permissions as part of that also. And what types of IT devices are important to track and manage? What do we need to understand, right? So somebody when it goes and looks up one of those items, what information might they need in order to repair it, in order to reorder it, in order to know about its life cycle? Those are things you might be looking into. Um, when we're talking about employees as assets, there's onboarding and offboarding and contractors, so your employment types, you start looking at where you're already storing some information about your employees and what information might you need to port over then into Atlassian? So once again, you have all that at your fingertips, kind of a metadata about employees. So we can also do software, we can have licenses, how many licenses do we have? Um, and what tiers maybe are those licenses available for us? We can keep those over in our assets. Uh, when you're working in GSM, especially the services that they provide, so understanding the top services that are important to the businesses and who manages those. So if you remember back, when you're using GSM and you're using operations, you have the ability to create services. And creating services actually creates them also as assets. You can't enhance them currently with additional attributes, but I have seen organizations just go ahead and kind of duplicate their services so that they can put, uh, more attributes on those, maybe there's more details that they need, and that's one way you can do that. And so you'll also want to understand how leadership and IT teams reporting, right? Because a lot of stuff, at least I know I do, is okay, what are the reports you need? That's how we build our databases, is knowing what we need to put in, so that, or, you know, knowing what we need to get out of it, so we know what to put into it. And so we're going to talk about reports about maybe assets deployed, the assignees, the associated purchase orders, contract data, um, maybe who owns that item, who makes decisions about those items? Because we can also tie these things into our approval flows at some point. So that way we can start to combine those schemas of items, you know, physical items, let's say, and people. And then do we have a good understanding of the. And then do we have a good understanding of the service taxonomy? The supporting service applications and infrastructure and their relationships. Cause something really important and really useful to you as you go in and build out your asset. Um, whether that's, you know, uh, your ITAM or your people is starting to draw out the relationships between those. And frankly, right now I would say even go out, start maybe uh, just listing some things out. Start talking to Rovo, have it draw you some diagrams, help it, have it help you draw some architecture. And then do that before you actually go in and start creating all of your object types. Because you'll go, oh, maybe I should have made that a different child object type so I could reference it up in my parent. And so our info box here says something similar. Start by identifying a clear use case. Been pointing those areas with the highest service problems. So again, coming back into the fact that we're talking about JSM here. So where do we have our highest service problems to ensure the asset structure addresses critical pain points? And improves service delivery. So what is information we could store out there so we could be proactive? For instance, again, with our lifecycle of our hardware. And what is the information so that when incidents happen? We know the right people to contact it and how to resolve or bring services back up. So it says, once you have the answers to those questions and a plan, start creating the object types and populating your schemas with data. So the question on the table is how should you organize that data? And so by the way, there are templates available to you when you start with uh, Lousy and assets. But here's an example, an ITSM schema. So where it can handle IT assets and services belonging to the ITSM schema. Or as we've been talking about with people, we can create objects related to people, organizational structure and so on. Should be stored in an HR schema. Alright, blue box time. Programmers or database administrators are accustomed to defining object structures, Rodney. Which makes them a valuable source of input and assistance. So exactly to Alex's point, right? I don't think about databases. But Rodney's like, I have a history of databases. So go find those experts in your organization. Um, as you build these, not gonna help you with the four twenty per se, but this is more than just that to give you guys some advice on where to go. Alright, and as I mentioned, there are object schema templates. Atlassian just keeps building more and more templates for us, whether they're space templates. For tier spaces or whatnot. We also have them available to us in uh, in assets. So you can go to assets for the very first time, create a new schema. It's gonna give you three different template types to start with. You can click on one of those and it's going to set those up for you. And it's going to give you your object type structure. It's going to give you attributes for each of those. And then there'll be some references. So references is more when we're talking about. If you have an object that uh, might live over here and then you have another object type over here. How do we connect those two object types? So we can cross-reference that data and/or as a good database administrator, I think is going to agree. So I'm gonna look at you Rodney. Reusability, when you create your databases, always think about those, those chunks, right? Or just like any developer would, right? Like, how can I reuse this code? How can I reduce the code? Same thing with our databases and that's how references um. Those are absolutely available to help do that. And so if you wanted to learn more about those schema templates, then you can go over to the Atlassian documentation. And I would argue also ask Rovo. I'll go on then.
You can, you can go on or if you, if you want Rodney to uh, to pick it up from here.
Alright, so how should we enter and maintain our data? So we're gonna go click those boxes. Again, there's questions that we can be asking. So which groups will access own and maintain data? Earlier, we saw that admin access, that developer access, that user access. So if the IT team updates server data and the HR team updates employee info, we'll create two different schemas. Because going back to the idea of they're like projects, so the same way we might wanna segregate users in our, from our projects, we can do the same thing with our object schemas. That's the level at which we start thinking. Who needs to own this? Who needs to maintain this? And then ultimately, who needs to consume this? So then we look next at how our data is acquired. So phone data might be based on a data feed from an external vendor, then the data should be tracked in a separate object schema. Um, so our import sources are, are going to come into play when we decide, do we want another one? So again, our HR could be coming from an external system, so we wanna segregate that. And then how is our data used? Uh, so if it's used similarly across service projects, it can be stored in a single schema. Maybe we have sensitive data, uh, sensitive, sensitive items that shouldn't be accessible by all those other JSM projects. Another great reason for a separate schema. And then how will that data be imported or brought into and updated? So manual updates are always a risk factor for a solution. Avoid keeping the same values in more than one place. That's what I was just mentioning um, a little bit before. If you can reuse that data, always recommend to reuse the data. Always recommend if you can connect or integrate to those other sources to bring that in. That's always going to be better um, to reduce the errors and ensure that both systems are, are similarly updated. So we'll get into the best practices uh, to help you efficiently manage and organize your assets. Ensure data accuracy and ease of maintenance. That's been a goal all along of a lot of the things we've talked about. So start by populating the assets with a solid inventory of assets and configuration items focused on specific use cases. You don't have to boil the ocean on this. You can build as you go. So if you find yourself populating with items that don't tie back to your goal or your use case, you're off track. Um, I might have been known to do that, but you learn in the process. You learn what not to do when you do that. Try to create a gen, try to create general object types that multiple other object types can reference. This will make maintenance considerably more manageable. Avoid creating multiple I, object types for similar items when you can use attributes instead to maintain the differences. Reports, post functions and automation rules will be directly affected by this and will be easier to maintain. For example, instead of creating multiple agreement object types to represent different types of agreements, create a single agreement object type and use an attribute to indicate the type of agreement. Though our assets should have unique identifiers that don't change. The identifier needs to be unique so it can be differentiated from other assets and must not change so you can track the asset over time. We recommend establishing a consistent naming convention to improve the usability of asset data. Depending upon the asset type, you can use a serial number, an asset tag, an asset name or external system identifier, right? This is effectively like our key. What is that key piece of information that we wanna include in our objects? Um, so that uh, as it's saying, as changes happen to it, you always have that key to refer back to. You, you have that static consistency. And assets and configure eight, configuration items should have relationships. An infrastructure asset represents a component that needs to be managed to deliver us or support a service. In other words, each infrastructure asset configuration item has a direct or indirect relationship with one or more service configuration items.
Alright, so we're moving on and uh, we've got the planning. We've got an idea of how to set up our asset management system. And let's start with the first step, and that is creating an object schema. And so what you're going to do is um, in, when you are in assets, you'll find a plus sign next to schemas on the left sidebar. Click on that plus sign and then you're gonna be prompted to select a schema template. And then uh, the name is mandatory, the description is not.
Although.
But if you're trying to maintain this thing long term, description may not be mandatory, but it is certainly helpful.
Oh, of course.
Indi do.
Alright.
Which I think Sarah was just about to say.
Alright, now, once you've created the object schema, then you can populate the object schema with object types. So from the object schema, you can look at the uh, schema tree. It's gonna um, it's gonna lay itself out on the left uh, sidebar as a tree structure, at least the, the root of a tree structure. You're gonna see a plus sign there. And then uh, from that plus sign, you can create object types. You can enter in details, giving it a name and then the uh, icon representing that particular object type. This is where you can also set up parent object types. Um, where uh, as we mentioned earlier uh, in this class before, the parents would have all of the attributes that could then be uh, inherited by its children.
Meaning you set up one set of attributes. Multiple object types can use those attributes.
Yep.
And you can also supplement for those child object types with other specific attributes for, just for that child.
Yep.
So you get into the reusability that way.
Yes. So uh, and you're gonna see that uh, once you've created the object type, it will appear in that tree view. And you can always move it to a different position where you want. And so let's kind of take a look at this. Um, so this is our schema tree on the, on the left sidebar. You can see that in our schema, IT employee assets. Uh, this plus sign right here indicates uh, the object types that you could create. So you could use a strict naming convention. It's beneficial. Um, and also uh, with a strict naming convention, it helps make the search queries um, easier. Now, for simplicity and consistency, uh, Atlassian recommends you use capitalized words, singular names. So regardless, uh, you would want um, something like uh, a title case, uh, business service. Cost of license, see how it's singular and how everything is capitalized. Same thing for the object types, uh, computer employee.
Now, keywords are capitalized. Go ahead, Sarah. I'll um, make my point afterwards.
I was, again, it might be the same one. Cause this is really critical. Yeah, it's really critical with AQL. It's really critical also for your automations because they will break if you've got your capitalizations wrong. They're considered different things. If it was business capital B, service lowercase s or business capital B, uppercase, you know, title, capital S. Those are two different things. Of cour, you know, it won't be able to find it. That's what I was going to say. So when you create that consistency, predictability.
Yes, um, whenever you're doing any sort of data entry or um, anything, the rule of thumb is if a user can't put it in wrong, they will put it in wrong. That's why you need to be super consistent about this naming convention. It's super strict about it. Because if you, there is any degree of uncertainty, you're gonna get every variation under the sun. Like um, I don't even like cost of license with the of being lowercase.
Get a little style guide argument going here. Just change it to license cost. And there, no argument.
That's actually what I probably would have done.
Right? Yep. And even there, they're being a little um, against themselves because like, for instance, their field names are not title case. And so using title case here on these object types is also a little funny, but I digress. Alright. Tell us more about object type hierarchy.
Alright, so we can arrange our tree to have a distinct hierarchy, right? We can uh, set up our object types where we have uh, parents. And then those uh, parents can have child object types so that we can visualize how those um, object types are related. Now, we, we've mentioned several cases before where the attributes are passed down from the parent object type to children object types. That's called inheritance. So that um, and from there, we go on to I for information.
Oh, it's on. It's on, friend. Let's talk about it.
We're, we're moving on. We're, we're talking about a hierarchy now. We're, you know, we, we passed our moment for the style guide. Um, now, the beautiful thing about inheritance is we can, uh, this allows us to keep different objects separate, but still easier to search because the attributes will have the same name across multiple object types. And then the uh, you can set up search queries that filter on a single object type or the object type and all of its children. Now, one other thing that I have done uh, in setting up my hierarchy is uh, making an object type abstract. So basically, uh, and this is, this is especially beneficial for uh, parent types. Because uh, you do not want uh, in our previous example where we had device as a parent type and then uh, printers as, as a child. Maybe I don't want to have an object of type device. So what I would do is I would make the parent abstract. And thus you cannot create instances of the device type. You're forced to either do uh, child types like printers, laptops, um, tablets, so. And then one more thing about uh, information, um, I for information. You can further configure object types by specifying role access to them. So um, normally the object types inherit the permission settings as the object schema, but you can change this to grant access uh, to specific object types. Alright, so once you've created the object types, uh, you can fill in the metadata that the object types are supposed to have. And that's through attributes and you can see how uh, we do that for a given object type. By, let's see, does it, okay. Uh, by first, going in and selecting the um, uh, by, by going in and selecting view attributes for the given object type. And then uh, that attributes button allows you to view that list of attributes belonging to that object type. And then from there, you'll see that there are specific uh, attributes here. Over on the left is the, what I call the grab handle. And the grab handle allows you to uh, click, drag the attribute to wherever you want in the order. So this allows you to set up the order. Uh, you can see there that for every attribute, there's a name, there's a description, the type of attribute. And uh, whatever the value is and any possible additional values. And you can, if you don't have that attribute yet, you can at the bottom, create the attribute. You do that by uh, entering the name and the description. Uh, going into type, selecting the type and then uh, selecting the uh, type value. Once you've done all of this, you can then click on the add button to create the brand new attribute. One thing to note in this big blue box, it is not possible to set default values for attributes.
That's interesting.
Oh, you, um, you think there's?
Oh, I think it's absolutely right. I just think it shouldn't be right.
Or? Are you sure? Are you sure? Because if, if you've said somebody will always put in a wrong thing, if it's possible. If you set it default and then somebody forgets to change it, that feels like.
It's going to be the correct default. It's not going to be every variation of Dell. Say for a laptop, um, object type.
I'm gonna.
If you know your company is likely going to go with a Dell OptiFine, just pulling an old name out of my head for 95% of their laptops and it's the exception that is an Apple MacBook. Having a default could save so much time for your teams.
I'll give you that.
We'll see, cause you know, I would, I, I, I would suspect that there are, um, two different, uh, the attributes would be set up differently. So like make and, uh, like manufacturer and make and, uh, things like that. So, all right. Now, some attributes can be of type status. You can set the, uh, the type value by looking at the status indicators. Now you could, now there is a, uh, one status indicator for the entire object schema. There is also one locally within the, um, I think wi- wi- within the object type, right? Okay.
Uh, no, for the schema.
Oh.
I thi- I think it is.
Oh, wait, one, one globally for all of assets and then one for the, one for the object schema. Right, that's right.
Yep. Yeah, that, that status thing is a total outlier from like everything else that you do. It's the one place where you can have those, those set options a- a- and maintain them from an admin level. Which throws me every time. Oh my God, is my status? Oh yeah, that's right. You don't just type in options.
All right. Now, once you've created the attribute, how do you configure it? So there might be some additional configuration options depending upon the type and the type value of the attribute. Uh, usually those are represented by the more actions, uh, which is typically three dots. Uh, you, or the ellipses, you click on it and you select attribute step settings. And so this is, we have a, we have an example of that right here. So, um, for our type here, we've got here. And then we can kind of look at the attribute settings or we could also delete the attribute. So those are, those are some options available. All right, so in the attribute settings, there are a few configuration options that you could get depending upon the attribute type. Uh, so things like including children, which allows you to make it possible to have, uh, for the attribute to include objects from both the parent and its children object types. Unique, so unique enforces, um, unique values among all of the objects of the same object type. So, uh, it's essentially acting as a, um, a one of a kind key. So.
Like your serial numbers.
Yes.
Or in a network, an IP address.
Yes. Validation. Uh, validation enables, uh, regular expressions to validate attributes of, uh, default type text, email and URL. So, uh, this can be useful for specific information like IP addresses, domain names or phone numbers. This is my favorite cardinality. You can specify how many allowed values you can have for the attribute. You could have a minimum of, um, you'd have, uh, one or you could have more than one. And so this is, um, if the minimum is greater than zero. In other words, if it's, i- i- if it's more than unique, it's automatically considered mandatory. And then finally filtering, filter objects. Uh, this option is for attributes of type object. So, uh, when you're doing those, those references and the references are usually, uh, for type objects. This allows you to filter the, the objects, um, so that you can, uh, you can really, really nail down the, um, uh, the reference. All right, best practices. So we've got a few recommendations. Add here to a naming convention. So Rodney, he of the title case, uh, you know, title case singular and going back to the field guide.
Guides, style guides everywhere.
Style guides, right? Employ a good naming convention. Title case is a good choice. Consider using plural attribute names when attributes have multi-select values. Uh, this is one of my favorites. Avoid free form entry.
Yes.
Feel text, text, text entry is bad.
Rodney's all over there like, yeah, snapping. Sorry.
Uh, avoid free form text fields. Whenever possible, use attribute types with selectable values. So there's object reference, status and select list types.
I will say, this does not only apply to assets, this should also apply to your fields.
Yes.
All right. And then also utilize user and group attribute types. So, uh, using the user and group attribute types really help out with automation rules, filtering, import configuration and search.
And now that you can have groups be tied to teams, it works all the better to be able to use that groups in your, um, in your assets.
So, once you've got the object types created, once you've defined the attributes, you can then create objects, the instances of those object types. Now there's a number of ways to do that. So, uh, the first way is, uh, you can just, um, I was just going to say you can just brute force it. You can manually do it. You can click on that, uh, create button in the top bar, uh, select the, the object type and then just go in there, give it the name, give it the key, get, fill out the attributes.
Remember all those data entry jobs?
Yeah. Yeah. And this is where maybe you want to be a little clever. Maybe you've, maybe you've gotten a CSV. And this is, uh, the other way of doing it. You can import that CSV or you could connect it to an external, uh, ITAM system like Level 42.
That was just thinking about them.
Is it Level 42 or Device 42?
It's Device 42.
Okay.
I, I'm thinking of the band. It's.
I'm thinking of the teal shirt that I regularly wear in spite of myself.
It's the, yeah, Sarah is correct. I, hashtag, I believe Sarah. It is, it is Device 42.
Hashtag, we believe Sarah.
Yes. Level 42 is a band.
I like it. They should do a, a little combo thing there. Go ahead. Jero Automation.
Jero Automation, so, uh, you could have Jero Automation creating new app, uh, objects is probably part of an automation rule when you, um, onboard, uh, somebody or, or assign a laptop to an individual. The population of certain attributes may be coming from that. You could also use the REST API. Uh, you could, where, um, that might be in conjunction with the automation rule or, uh, could be through a separate program to, um, give you the advanced configuration. And then finally you can set up, um, the object through referenced objects, um, the attributes. That is enabled at the object schema permission. And so this in your, uh, object schema of IT employee assets, you can look through one of the easy ones is if a, if a particular object type does not have any instances, you can click on the create an object button. All right. We are, so, uh, we're at the hour mark. So I don't know if you want to continue or if you want to kind of.
How much do we have in this section?
Yeah, give us a little scroll.
Okay, making changes and then the quiz.
Ah, let's do it, yeah.
Yeah, let's. We'll, 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 uh, go through. So, once you've created a, once you've created an object. So again, going back to CRUD, uh, this is part of the update phase of database management. That, and that is, uh, making any changes such as adding labels, making changes to attributes, uh, particularly like statuses. There's a number of ways you can do that. You can always do it manually, individually, just manually edit the individual object and change the attributes. Do that a- anytime. Uh, you could also do it through bulk changes. So, um, you can, if you need to make, um, changes to attributes to more than one object. So this is really, really useful for like routine maintenance, uh, implementing an organizational change or maybe correcting data inconsistencies in the asset inventory. Um, so the bulk changes can be, uh, you filter all of the similar objects in the assets view. Uh, choose a, choose a desired bulk action and then apply the updates. And that keeps it from being like an error prone one after the other. And finally, the, uh, third way of doing this through automation. Um, you can use, uh, Jero Automation to simplify changing objects with rules that trigger specific actions based upon predefined conditions. Basically like, uh, if, if we assign Sarah a new laptop, um, maybe one of the attributes is, uh, laptop owner and that's a user field. We can then use a Jero Automation to, uh, set that to Sarah.
Indeed.
All right. Woo, six questions on this quiz or?
Six.
All right, I'm going to read the questions.
Okay.
So we've got Rachel, an IT manager is tasked with implementing a new asset management process using assets and Jero Service Management. What is the first step Rachel should take to ensure a successful implementation? Is it purchase additional software licenses for all team members? Determine the types of assets her team manages and their relationships. Immediately start creating object schemas without a plan or train all employees on how to use Jero Service Management. I like all those old ideas.
I like all of these eventually. But there's one that I definitely think should be the first step.
Yep.
And that is Bravo B.
I'm thinking B.
So determine the assets her team manages and their relationships.
There we go.
Woo hoo, because all of the other things, yeah, are going to get you started well. Especially C. Okay. Alex, a service project administrator wants to organize the company's IT assets and Jero Service Management. Which of the following actions should Alex take first? Create individual objects for each IT asset? Create an object schema for IT assets? Configure global settings for all assets or assign roles and permissions to team members?
So I'm confused here because it says Alex and you know.
We know he's not.
Right answer and then there's the Ortiz answer. So which, which one do we choose?
E, walk away.
Well, the Ortiz answer is not on here considering he has disappeared.
I, I, I think, uh, maybe I spoke too much and on this one and he's taking a nap.
I know. Yes, exactly. It's like Bob's.
Have you done the, um, 24 hour live stream with him? He is definitely taking a nap.
Well, you know, the, the surest sign that he's taking a nap is if he puts on the Master Chief helmet from, uh, from Halo, so.
True, true story.
Yes, true story. But I will tell you that the, uh, that the correct Alex answer is, uh, my subdivision is B, create an object schema for IT assets.
I agree with B.
Agreed.
Oh, there we go.
If all these are B, I'm going to laugh.
Isn't it funny? I know. All right. Mia is setting up a new asset management system for office equipment. She needs to categorize laptops, printers and routers. What should Mia do to achieve this categorization? Create a single object type for all office equipment. Create individual object type for laptops, printers and routers. Configure attributes for office location only or assign all office equipment to a default object schema.
You know.
I could argue two of them depending upon the use case. We didn't ask enough questions.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm going to go with the, the, the trend, right? I'm going to, I'm going to say, I'm going to say B.
I am going to say B in spite of myself.
Sarah?
Okay, but she could totally do A.
She could. But.
With parents and children and inherited attributes. All right. Fine. She should create individual, I guess technically, even if she creates a parent with attributes, they are still individual object types for each category, but you know. Anywho, okay, next question. John is configuring the laptop object type in assets. He wants to include information about the model, serial number and assigned user. How should John proceed? Read a global attribute for all object types. Configure individual attributes for model, serial number and assigned user within the laptop object type. Assign all laptops the same attribute for simplicity or use the default attributes provided by Jero Service Management.
I think Ortiz should enter this one. Yes.
I didn't even hear the question. I'm back.
Well.
That makes it all the better.
I was booking my hotel.
You can, you can read it silently and you can answer.
I was looking up for my hotel for, for team. You're going? No, I'm not going, but I just, I'm still wanting to book the hotel.
That does not make sense, my friend.
I know. I plan on, I plan on participating on everything but the team event.
That makes even less sense, my friend.
Why is it, didn't we ask, so this question already?
Nope.
No.
Nope. We asked a similar question, but not this question.
Yeah, B or C?
Well, the transfer far with the previous three has been B.
Uh huh.
And, and.
I'm gonna go with B.
It's B. We add those. All right, this is a longer quiz or four, 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 right, for B? So question number five.
Oh, we're back to Sarah.
I'm an asset manager who wants to ensure that all IT assets have a consistent naming convention. You know I do. And that specific object schemas have unique configurations. What actions should Sarah take? Apply the naming convention globally and configure unique settings at the schema level. Configure everything at the object level for maximum flexibility. Use the same settings for all schemas to ensure consistency or avoid configuring settings at the global level to prevent conflicts.
I hate this one because it broke the trend.
It, yeah.
I know.
Well, you, you know, what we can, you know, what we could do is we could select the wrong answer. Do it over again and see if, see if it comes up with.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just get it reordered.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we know the wrong answer is B currently.
All right, let's hit it. And then take it again. Okay.
Okay.
Try again.
Really?
In theory, we should only have to do this three times to get it there, right?
I mean, this redraw every time.
Depending on how random it is, but, okay.
Wasn't B, guys? Let me determine that one.
No, we're getting there. Aw, it came up the same again.
It keeps doing the same one.
All right. Yep.
Combo breaker.
I know.
I don't know, it was just
The exception to the rule. Tom, Tom is adding new laptops to assets. He has already set up the laptop object type with the necessary attributes. What is Tom's next step? Is it to create a new object schema for each laptop? Create objects for each laptop with the laptop object type? Assign all laptops to a default attribute? Or configure global settings for the laptops?
I think it's, I think this is really just teasing us now, just because the pattern now, this one goes back to the pattern.
It is. We're back on track. Ba 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 B.
Yep.
There was much rejoicing.
All right.
So next time we will meet up for creating relationships between objects.
Yep.
And again, this is a lot of database design.
So much.
See you guys next, our next Wednesday.
See everybody on Wednesday.